The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and the Local Redevelopment Authority Meeting is now in session. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. We come to you tonight, Heavenly Father. We come to you with praise and thanksgiving on our hearts and in our minds. We come to you tonight, Heavenly Father, and we ask for your blessing on each and everything that's communicated, each and everything that's done within this chamber tonight. We know, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you tell us that we have not because we ask not. Tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, we're asking for wisdom for this council. You know, Heavenly Father Jesus, the decisions that they have to make. You know, Heavenly Father Jesus, what this community needs. But we just ask for unity, Heavenly Father, unity with the council, with the community, and we all just turn to you and ask you for the wisdom that we need. And Heavenly Father Jesus, we'll give you the praise and thanks for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barber Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Any council or authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Saying none will commence with item 1.1, the Strategic Plan Update.
Mayor Members of the City Council, it is my pleasure to provide you with an update on the progress being made in meeting the strategic goals that were established by the City Council in consultation with the executive management team in March of this year. We have our next strategic planning session this Thursday, and so this is the last update before we meet again to set the objectives for the next six months. So as we all know, the City of Riverbank's mission is that we are committed to providing exceptional municipal services in a fiscally sound and professionally responsible manner for our community, and that's what drives us. And we're hoping that as we take that mission that we achieve our vision, and that is that we will be recognized as a premier community where individuals, families, and businesses thrive in a safe and beautiful environment. Our core values: professionalism, transparency, teamwork, respectful behavior, fiscal responsibility, integrity, and ethical behavior. We had to point out, this is an interesting discussion on professionalism, that professionalism probably is all of those other things wrapped up, that we conduct ourselves in a way that honors the public, that we serve, and honors each other, and that it has very little to do with position or what you wear, and it has everything to do with attitude. And so that's been a discussion we've been having with the staff, which has been really eye-opening for a lot of people. Our three-year goals: we want to enhance public safety; we want to improve and maintain our infrastructure and our city facilities; we want to enhance professionalism and customer service; we want to achieve and maintain financial stability and sustainability. And in order to do all of that, we need to retain and attract businesses, because one of our key areas is that the revenues that we have that go back into providing services is created by our business community. And I know each of you know that. I say that for those that may just be popping into the City Council meeting and may not watch this, but business is an incredibly important part of what we do, and we appreciate those businesses that have made Riverbank their home and have invested in Riverbank. Their investment helps us provide the services for our community, and retaining and attracting new business will help us maintain and provide hopefully more enhanced services in the future. First goal, to enhance public safety. There was an implementation of a gang awareness prevention program that was set up in part by Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez and our police chief that was completed. There was a goal to conduct two bilingual presentations regarding Nextdoor.com. One was completed, but there was very low attendance, and so it didn't seem like it was really productive to have another one, but that continues to be an avenue for people to participate. To host the Riverbank Police Services Youth Academy, to expose youth to law enforcement services, that was held July 27th through the 31st, and it was great to see all those enthusiastic faces. Participate in the completion of the County Disaster Preparedness Plan, that is something that is ongoing. There was a slight delay at the county, and so now we have a new completion date for March 2016. Norma Torres Manu Cruz is our key staff person and liaison to the county on this, and I guess we are the first city that has given them our document and has really tried to initiate that process and wanting to see that move forward. In terms of improving and maintaining infrastructure and facilities, we have a number of presentations that are actually scheduled for this evening wrapped up into the final staff report that's on the agenda tonight, and one of those is to provide a report on the consultant for conceptual design and cost estimate for the sports complex. The second item under this goal area is to update the Storm Water Management and Control Ordinance, and that was actually done in June. The other item that we've been working on and speaking a lot about, particularly in regards to some of the comments about the drought, is the financing for the installation of the smart water meters, and that has been ongoing, and a lot of work has been done on that, and we anticipate that we will bring you a progress report and most likely a request for action on the financing plan at the second meeting in November. We also have been looking at financing options for the pool locker room renovation, and again Sue will be talking about that later tonight, along with the community center, and then also Jacob Myers Park. So we have a lot of capital needs in our city, and Sue's going to be providing some information on that later on. We also had an objective to secure state funding for Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plan to be able to improve the treatment there, and that's an ongoing effort. As the council and members of the public may be aware, that we are near the final completion of some major improvements at the wastewater treatment plant that were funded through a private-public partnership. This is for the next phase of improvements, and at this time, the money that's actually out there at this point is for those systems that are actually having difficulties, and we're not actually in a difficult point. Now, the great news is all of you are at the League of California Cities, and there are some new funding coming out, so we're going to be watching that very closely to see where we can take advantage of the funding that's becoming available right now, and they're doing workshops and setting the rules over the course of the next several months. Number eight is to modify the Storm Drain Master Plan to meet the new state standards, and because we adopted the new stormwater ordinance, we end up not needing to do this particular objective, so sort of rolled into the other item. Number nine on this is to identify funding for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and again, that's part of Sue's presentation later on this evening. And then ultimately, in the future, what we'd like to do is actually develop an actual Parks and Recreation Master Plan. That is something that we will probably need to have some development fees in the bank to pay for. It's a costly effort. Sue and I talked earlier this week about probably phasing this in, maybe doing it in smaller chunks for budgetary reasons. Enhance professionalism and customer service. One of the objectives was to do a training for the website that was launched earlier this year, and while there's continuing need for updates to it, it is a dramatic improvement over the last one that we had. Also, too, we would have a whole citywide staff social event, and the organizational culture team held a great barbecue at Jacob Myers Park on May 1st, and it was well attended by staff members and their employees. This is part of the organizational health initiative that I've been talking about with all of you over the course of the last year. And we also had anticipated bringing the organizational culture team to the City Council and introducing them publicly. In terms of some scheduling issues, that wasn't able to work out, but this is a team that's been put together representing all of the departments that is working to improve morale, trust, and cooperation, those key components of organizational health in the organization. And then we're also working on customer service training. We weren't able to get it done within the specific six months, but we do have the training scheduled for December 1st. One of the reasons why we didn't do this, this is actually a staff, the staff is going to do that, myself and the HR manager are going to lead that training, and with some of the other things going on, we weren't able to actually prepare the material and actually get it scheduled, but it is something that we do have planned for December 1st. In terms of achieving and maintaining financial stability and sustainability, a significant item that's not actually on this list but was taking place last night is the City Council spent more than an hour reviewing a budget forecast that was presented by Maricela Garcia, our Director of Finance, and that presentation supplemented a written report that is available on the city's website, and that news is sobering, and that maintaining financial stability and sustainability is going to be something that is going to require a lot of diligence by this council for years to come. But I think that this council has shown a lot of foresight under the leadership of the mayor and who really had asked for this to be done for the first time last year, and we are now making it an annual event to really carefully look at what do our numbers look like in five years to come. So anyway, the City Council, the potential water and sewer rate changes, the City Council did conduct the Proposition 218 hearing, adopted the ordinance for first reading until last May, and is actually on for second reading tonight, and so that process will ultimately most likely be completed this evening. In regards to number two was the fiscally responsible employment agreements with the cities to employee groups and also to the executive management team, and those were also completed in June of this year. The system development fee ordinance update, that is actually on the agenda for tonight's consideration. Negotiate the development of a community facilities district for services for all-new development. The private development hasn't moved along fast enough for us to actually have to develop and negotiate a CFD. However, you may recall that there was a presentation given by Kathleen Klee kind of overviewing what that process might look like earlier this year. Number five was to identify funding sources for downtown revitalization, parks and infrastructure improvements, and to make recommendations to the City Council. Some of that will be represented by Sue tonight. The interesting thing is that there's just not a lot out there for downtown revitalization. We are hopeful that there might be some provisions in AB 107, which was signed by the governor, that will help us. We're waiting for an analysis of that from one of the consultants to the designated local authority who offered to share that with the city, Cosmot and Associates. Number six is determine the feasibility of a citywide stormwater utility district and make a recommendation to City Council. This strategic planning period has been really focused on the water and sewer rate increases. Those were considered critical for action because of the ongoing structural deficits in each of those funds, and so the stormwater utility issues have been addressed quite a bit over the course of the last six months and were discussed at the budget time. This is something that will probably be a big topic of discussion in the next six months and probably for years to come as well. I did send a memo that kind of highlights what this process might look like to the City Council, and we'd be happy to make it available upon request, anybody who's interested. Number seven was to present an annexation plan for the east side of Riverbank to include the North County Corridor Crossing at Eleanor Street. That was done, and the City Council has taken action to initiate the process to expand the city's sphere of influence, which is referenced in item number eight, and that also does include an expansion of the sphere on the east and west sides of Riverbank. Under retaining and attract business, the mayor has continued to do meetings, oh, excuse me, the first item there was downtown specific plan, and the specific plan, I'm happy to say, was actually completed and adopted by the City Council earlier this year, back in April, and that was really a good one to check off the list. Conducted business support workshop for current potential businesses. We've been working with the Alliance. We ended up not holding a business support workshop, but we did have a very successful innovation challenge that was held earlier this month that was hosted by our own council member Cal Campbell, who is the City Council's representative to the Alliance Board. The third item was to identify components to be included in business retention and attraction marketing. This is something that is kind of, we've been talking about it, but it still needs to be kind of further refined, and needs to be customized to each individual response. And so that's really been, a big part of that's been the Riverbank Industrial Complex under Debbie Olson's direction, and so she is carefully watching those, and if there's an option that comes available, she looks at that. But as you know, we're pretty much filled out there, and we really have no space at the moment because of the environmental work that will be coming up in the next year. So we'll continue to revisit that. This is the business visit, so the mayor has continued to do some local business visits. I believe at least six were done. We've met with realtors, also, too, the City Council acknowledged a lot of our manufacturers last month, I believe it was, and so that was a great chance to reach out to them, and we did actually send out certificates and a copy of the proclamation to our manufacturing businesses, which are really important components for job generation. And then an item that is coming up is an action for incentives for new restaurants downtown. It's been discussed at this council level as well as in general, that restaurants drive downtown revitalization. And so on October 27th, or the first meeting in November, which is on the 10th, plan to bring to you a loan program that would provide loans in the amount of probably up to $7,000 at zero percent for a business that has an action marketing plan with some qualifications for a new restaurant downtown. Be first come, first served, be at the discretion of the City Council, but it's something that we'd be able to offer out as this incentive. In addition to that, as you know, there were a number of conferences this month, and one of them was the American Planning Association Conference that Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager, went to, and so she has some additional information on that in regards to how do we reach out, and we're reaching out to some restaurateurs and seeing what they need, and we can continue to tweak and tailor that based on the needs that become available to us. And so I believe, as you know, and as I have told, any potential restaurateur, realtor, anybody interested in business, anybody who has any kind of connection out there at all, that if somebody wants to bring a restaurant to the downtown, we are willing to work with them, and we are willing to consider giving some incentives, limited, because our resources are limited, but we will do what we can do to make it worth their while to come to Riverbank. And so with that, I just want to offer again that recognize that anything like that needs to be approved by the City Council, but we certainly want to be as creative as possible with a restaurateur, particularly a proven restaurateur that has demonstrated success. We would love to have them come to Riverbank. And then eventually, this is repeated the other one, and then we also believe, and we've talked about branding, and doing more work on branding for the City of Riverbank. We haven't quite gotten there yet, and that might be something we look at over the next year, but this kind of blends into that business retention and marketing package that I referenced earlier. As I mentioned earlier, our next strategic planning session is this Thursday, October 15th. That will be starting at 8:30 a.m. It'll be at the Riverbank Industrial Complex, and there will be one, at the beginning of the meeting, there'll be an opportunity for public comment, and at the rest of the time, people are more than welcome to monitor or watch the City Council and the management team work through strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, as well as going through what the objectives will be for the next six months. The other thing I would like just to mention for those that are not a member of the council is that, as you know, this strategic plan does not deal with everything that we do on a daily basis. There are some things that we're dealing with in addition to that that will be particularly important. One is district elections, and we actually have a community meeting on that tomorrow night at the Riverbank Language Academy, starting at 6 o'clock. District election's an issue. The drought continues to be a major concern in impacting our operations. We also have the North County Corridor, and that environmental report is supposed to be released later this month, and we need to be following that and working closely on that document. So those are just three additional items that will be dominating the next six months, and I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the public, because I certainly know that this council is well aware of all of that. But with that, look forward to meeting with this council and the management team on Thursday. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them, along with members of the team.
Are there any questions for Jeff? Look forward to Thursday.
May I make just one additional comment?
No, you complete it.
This is a good one. This is a good one. I think we've gotten a lot done in the last six months. I think we've gotten a whole heck of a lot done in the last year. And one of the reasons why is because of each one of you and the City Council, and the unification that you have as you approach issues, and your ability to deal with issues responsibly even when you disagree. And I think that the unity of this council and your focus on the vision is one of the reasons why we're able to get so much done, and I just wanted to thank each one of you for your part and your service to this community, and it is not taken for granted by myself or the team. So thank you. Thank you, council.
Item two, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board.
Yes, my name is John Foley. I'm a Riverbank resident for 28 years. Hate to beat a dead horse, I'm back again. And you know what? I'm really getting tired of this. I've come up here no less than five times and asked for some kind of change in the way that you shut people's water off here in the city. You all have my phone number. I've contacted each and every one of you. I've talked to each and every one of you, and you've ignored me. So to listen to Ms. Anderson talk about what a great job and attention to detail you do, I'm thinking it's laughable, because it's been 15 months now. I haven't got a phone call or any satisfaction or an apology for the very rude and very disrespectful way that Ms. Anderson handled me when I came to talk to her about my water bill. Now you're going to have a professionalism and respectful behavior class, and you're going to have her teach it? It seems a little bit laughable also. Fifteen months, no apology, no explanation, no phone calls from anyone telling me what has been done or what has been talked about, nothing. I've come here and I've asked for some help from you people, you've done nothing. I'm asking you again, somebody tell me what's going on with the water bill and shutting off the bills, the water, with no notice, and give me a phone call. Ms. Anderson is not qualified, in my opinion, to be the city manager, and I understand everybody was newly elected last year, and she was the city manager. You may have been intimidated a little bit. I needed three of you to help me, and not one of you stepped up. I'm disappointed in the City Council and you, mayor. Nothing personal, but I'd like to get some results from you this time. Somebody give me a call, please.
Any further public comment? Moving on to item three, consent calendar, consistent with item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of September 22nd, 2015, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, award bid for the Roselle Avenue Sidewalk Project and authorized execution of future change orders. Item 3D, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, approving the renewal of the current animal control service agreement with the City of Oakdale for fiscal year 2015 to 2016, and 2016 to 2017. Item, LRA, item 3E, out-of-state travel request for LRA staff. Do I have anyone wishing to pull or have any recommendations on items 3A through 3E? Anyone from the public wishing to comment on any consent items? Saying none, I bring it back to the City Council for action.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
A second.
We have a motion to approve and a second for the consent calendar.
I believe there was a correction to the report on LRA item 3E. Is that correct?
Yes, there was a typo.
Was that the typo for the year?
Yeah, there's a typo for the year.
It was 16, not 15.
Yes.
Okay. Council Authority Member Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 41, second reading by title only and adoption one. Proposed ordinance number 2015-TAC 014 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title V, Public Works Chapter 51 Sewer Section 51.03, Rates and Charges Established by the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances, and two, proposed ordinance number 2015-015 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title V, Public Works, Chapter 52, Water Section 52.61, Fees and Charges Established by the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Mayor Members of the City Council, this item has been discussed thoroughly at previous, at numerous City Council meetings, and so this evening it is the second reader reading. Maricela Garcia is available to address any questions that you have, if you would like to have us provide, you know, a brief overview of what the process has looked like, or if there's any members from the public, but at this point it is second reading, and we are recommending adoption.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on item 41?
I've already opposed this water and sewer increases. Social Security is not going up next year. Medicare probably will. So people are going to be getting these raises with nothing more to pay for them. I don't understand why you can't take a little time to find some other program, some way of doing a program that will help out the seniors, disabled, the ones on Social Security that can't afford this. You're going to have that many more people out there that are going to choose between paying a bill or buying food. CSU has consolidated, has Prop 218 assessment, and they have a program. I think you could at least take some time to look into this, to find some way to help out these people that are not going to be able to afford these extraordinary, these raises are way more than they need to be. You could have cut down to one bond instead of a whole bunch of bonds when you picked your option. I really think you need to go back and look at this again, knowing that these people are not going to get a raise this year.
Thank you for your input. Any further comment? Saying none, I bring it back to the City Council for proposal or action.
I move that we adopt item 4.1.
A second.
We have a motion to adopt item 4.1 in a second.
Council Member Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz. Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Before I move on, no promises, but we are looking at methods that you've suggested, and that we'll continue looking at that, and we'd like to have your inputs if you can. But we can't do it at the same time. Public hearings. Item 5-1, conduct the first reading and introduction by title only of ordinance of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15 Land Usage Chapter 150 Building Regulations by repealing the System Development Fees Subchapter, Sections 150.30 through 150.36 in its entirety, and substitute it with a new System Development Fees Subchapter.
Yes, mayor members of the city council, this is a strategic plan item that is a follow-up to the adoption of the Nexus Fee Study. John Anderson, the city's consulting planner, is going to provide the staff report on this item. John Anderson.
Yes, mayor members of the council, it's my pleasure tonight to represent, you know, what's really been many years of work from staff level, to bring to your council kind of some cleanup legislation. It's not pretty. It's a bunch of words. It's an ordinance that was created back in 1967. It's received a number of different modifications. And what you see in your staff report, part of the published agenda, is a red line version of all the changes that we're going through to bring up to current practices, the way that we administer the system development fees, the developer fees citywide. It takes out a lot of the guesswork that the development community, that staff, that your council would have to deal with, or has dealt with, quite frankly, over the years. And it makes it much, much clearer as to what the expectations are for things like fee deferral, fee reduction, and also certainly fee administration. One of the big issues we deal with at staff level all the time, quite frankly, is when a developer goes into an area and builds master infrastructure and makes a substantial investment in this community, not only with their project, but also with the capital infrastructure to serve that project. And there doesn't necessarily always a clear vision of how that individual may receive either fee credit and/or reimbursement against the improvements he's installed, provided they're part of the city's capital improvement program and part of the system development fee program. So these ordinance revisions clean up a lot of administrative issues that, quite frankly, were handled, you know, by staff. It brings it to the council in many cases for a specific action, like a fee deferral, and it describes the guidelines that those projects or those applications would be asked to follow. So with that, this is a notice public hearing. There's quite a bit of detail, both in the staff report and also in the red line and the clean version of this ordinance. It is an ordinance that has to come back to you a second time for official adoption and becomes effective 30 days thereafter. But this has been reviewed, re-reviewed, quadruple reviewed, both by your staff, by legal counsel, city's legal counsel, as well as the development community, all of which have played an active role in developing these guidelines that help us move forward. As you know, the city did complete a comprehensive update to the system development fees that was ultimately adopted by your city council on March 24th of this year, and this is simply just a follow-up to that, and allows us to move forward with the administration of the system development fees that we're hopefully going to be collecting from here as we continue to move in a positive way with new development, new construction, and new investment in this community. So are there any questions to what I've said, or the staff report, or the red line version of the document that you see before you? Anyway, this is, again, this is a public hearing, and then, so you'd be conducting your public hearing, and then this has already been noticed and scheduled for a second part, is part of your next city council hearing on the 27th, I believe, of this month. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
Question on cross borrowing of funds. It says a city manager can do the fund, has the authority to make a loan from one fund to another. It doesn't say if there's a limit on how much it is, and it doesn't specify which funds. Is that only the development, assisted development funds, or is that any fund?
I'll answer at the end.
Oh, I think that was my main question, was how that works, because it doesn't specify which the funds. It says, in another part of this, it says on the system development fees that they can't be commingled. Can it ever be commingled with money from a different fund account? So I'm kind of -- it's confusing, because one place it says they're going to cross-borrow a fund, and another place it says they can't, and it doesn't really put any limits on what the city manager can do or what funds she can take it out of. Because I'm really concerned about water and sewer funds, because that's where your connection fees are, and apparently the connection fees are part of your system development fees, according to this.
Close the public hearing. Mr. Anderson, can you explain when you can borrow from a system from a one fund to another?
Well--
They're not commingling, but they are still distinctly different.
There are distinctive differences between the various funds that the city finance department is in charge of. What we're talking about here is a modification to the system development fees, which are AB 1600, or I should say fees that are governed by AB 1600, which are development impact fees. They are not connection charges, so they have nothing to do with water or sewer connection charges. Those are administered under a separate fund. It has nothing to do with water and sewer rate charges. That's a different fund. So we're under state law, under AB 1600 law, to manage and administer these various fund accounts, whether it's for road improvements, or storm, or for sewer lines, or for park improvements, or for general government items that are part of the adopted fee structure system, to manage those. And they have to be set aside in separate accounts. And in the financial reports that your finance director gives you, those are appropriately administered and appropriately accounted for in those independent accounts. So that's one of the distinctions I want to make. Cross borrowing is a technique, quite frankly, that's been used in this city and other cities, you know, for years. It allows the developer to negotiate with the city if, for example, they're making an over-investment in sewer improvements to get credit for sewer and other related impact fees by agreement with the city. And those accounts, it actually becomes a deficit, or actually a debit, I should say, to one of the other's accounts. It would be to water, or to parks, or something like that. So it's not monies that's simply written off. It's monies that's due back to those accounts, and in fact, there's an interest charge that's accumulated as part of that as well. So it's all part of reimbursement. It's directly related to capital improvements, has nothing to do with water and sewer connection charges, and has nothing to do with water and sewer rate.
That was a general comment that she made. She doesn't know what -- but it's not the city manager approval, it is the city council approval.
Right, that's right.
And there are stipulations in when we, when it comes before, that it will not be negatively impacting who you're borrowing from.
That's right.
And it is for a capital improvement program.
Yep, that's the intent.
Thank you.
And mayor members of the council, in regards, there is one reference to a city manager being able to do that, and that is only to maintain construction of an already authorized improvement. So that is the only time where I would be able to do something, is to keep a project moving forward. And good practice would be, of course, to come back and report that to you, and hopefully not have that happen. But that's the only time where I have the authority to do that.
Right. That's with the same stipulation, not interfering with the capital improvement program, and that should not adversely affect.
Correct.
That's right.
Yes, correct.
Then you would bring it back to us, of course.
Yes, I would.
Mayor, council, I would just add too, the borrowing refers to inter-fund borrowing.
Inter-fund borrowing.
And the inter-fund would be the system development fund. So it's not intra-fund bargaining, which could be your enterprise charges. So just to make clear, it's definitely within the system development fees.
Which, again, is the -- we're asking to modify the administrative ordinance that governs the system development fees. I mean, that's really, that's the only section of the city's code that we're talking about modifying. Anyway.
Any questions from the council, or any comments? I am asking for a approval as considered and presented today on item 5.1 for the first reading and introduction by title only.
Make a motion to accept item 5.1.
A second.
We have a motion to approve as presented item 5.1 and a second.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5-2, conduct the first reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title 15 Land Usage Chapter 150 Building Regulations by adding a new section 150.16 Charlie Expedited Permitting Procedures for Small Residential Rooftop Solar Systems.
Mayor members of the city council, this item is being brought before you in order to comply with a state mandate. Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager, will be providing an overview of the proposed ordinance.
Good evening, mayor and council. As the city manager stated, this was mandated by the state, and it is considered a housekeeping item. Okay, so the California government code provides it is a policy of the state to promote and encourage the installation and use of solar energy systems by limiting obstacles to their use and minimizing the permitting cost. It's my understanding that in the past, that many cities have received solar permits, and due to concerns with aesthetics, or maybe glare, have like held up these permits or sat on them for a while without approving them, which is against what the state wants. They want solar to move forward, and so the governor brought this forward to encourage the faster processing of these solar permits. Okay, so then the California government required that every city, county, or city and county must adopt an ordinance that creates an expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar energy systems. We're requested to review and issue permits over the counter, to review and issue permits electronically, and develop a checklist of all requirements that are needed for the expedited review. Currently, our building division does issue solar permits over the counter as possible. This tends to be the older established solar companies that have processed permits with us before, that know what we're looking for, and do a good job on their permits in the first place, on their plans. For small communities like ours, it is acceptable to approve these solar permits in one to three days, which is what we currently do right now, because we do not have staff dedicated to reviewing these solar permits, and we have been processing about 10 per week, on We also do accept documents for review electronically right now and provide their comments electronically, which does cut down on the time of processing. And we would provide expedited reviews upon request, but we do process them as quickly as possible. So we get them in and out, and it's some of the newer companies that are coming up and requesting to be expedited, but we only have so much staff time and so many hours per day. So we just do the best we can and get them done within a day to three days' time. This project is categorically exempt under ministerial projects, the issuance of building And so tonight is, you are to approve the first reading, if you so desire, and introduce the proposed ordinance. It will come back again on October 27th, and if adopted, it would become law in 30 I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Open for public comment. Having no public comment, I close the public hearing. I bring it back. This is the first of, you can bet on a lot of them.
I just had a question about, that said rooftop. Does that mean that it's not, if you put it on the ground, there's a different fee?
Is that, you're done with the question?
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay. I reopened it and took your comment, I reclosed it.
There is no difference in fee. It's just that this does request that we expedite the rooftop permits. And to just add a little bit more information, another way that we have expedited or streamlined the process is we used to have more than one inspection, and so now that's just been reduced to a final inspection to speed up the process. But this does refer to residential rooftops.
Thank you. I'm still bringing it back. I do have comments. This is the first of a series of expedited priorities from the governor. The next one is the electric vehicles charging that he signed into law two days ago, which will require the same expeditious process and may even supersede this expeditious process. What this does is that they put the regular planning, or what were development, aside to expedite these individual processes. And I find that that to be a little bit poking a finger in the eye of the local government that says that you can't govern correctly, so therefore we will manage it for you. And I am opposed to this type of behavior from the state government. But saying that, I'll ask for any comments or any action on item 5.2. We have no choice, we have to accept it.
I'll make a motion, we approve item 5.2.
I'll second it.
A second.
Unfortunately, we have a motion to approve item 5.2 and a second.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
And get ready for the EV.
Yes, sir.
Item 6.1, consider a petition to approve a resolution of the city council of the City of Riverbank, California, granting approval to defer payment of system development fees for McRoy-Wilbur Communities for the Diamond Bar West subdivision.
Mayor members of the city council, this is an item that was brought before for the city council's consideration to defer system development fees associated with the building of homes that are part of the Diamond Bar West project. This is a request to defer the fees, not waive or reduce the fees. So I just wanted to clarify that going into this particular discussion, that what we're requesting last, this evening, is for the council to consider deferring the fees from the initial point of building permit issuance to a building permit final inspection, excuse me. So Donna Kenny, our planning and building manager, will be able to provide an overview of what the proposal is. Carrie Pope, representative of the development team, is also in the audience this evening, and so we certainly welcome his comments on regards to this approach.
Thank you, Jill. As she mentioned, this does involve Diamond Bar West and McRoy-Wilbur Communities. As we all know, system development fees are to provide an adequate and constant method for financing the unfunded portion of needed system development costs throughout the city, to promote the orderly and efficient expansion of public improvements, to ensure the continuation of necessary services, and to establish equitable methods for minimizing public facility and service costs to the city associated with new development. So these fees are charged to new construction-- So these fees are charged to new construction, including the expansion of or addition to existing non-residential structures. So here's a chart of the total system development fees for Diamond Bar West and I would like to mention that it is an estimated amount per unit because some of it's figured out through square footage and not all the houses are the same. So we see there are public works, streets and public works fees, water, wastewater, storm drain, police, general government, parks and rec, and a 5% administrative fee. So based on a 1,600 square foot unit with a garage and front porch for a total of 2,200 square feet, the approximate amount per unit is $26,0586. So if you take that number, the total system development fees, and in the past, there has been deferrals allowed and they were charged $100 processing fee according to the planning department records. So you take that total of $26,686, you add the building permit fees for a total per dwelling unit of around $37,000. Okay, so of that amount, as I mentioned, the system development fees are around $26,000 per unit. The developer requests to pay upfront fees of the $10,501.61 per unit of the building permit issuance and the city would add a lien. So they would make a partial payment, the city would lien the property. Then, and this would be at building permit issuance, then the developer would pay the remainder, the $26,000 approximately, prior to the final inspection and city would remove the lien. So just to be clear, the fees are not reduced, but they were broken into two pieces. The first part at building permit issuance and the second part at building final. Mr. Mark Wilber has done this type of agreement with the City of Turlock, the City of Ripon, and with Stanislaus County in the recent past. Okay, so staff is recommending that the City Council approve the deferral for this project and this project only, based upon the numbers that I just discussed. And as I had mentioned in my discussion as well, there is a lien placed on the property to ensure that the city does collect all the fees. So what this does is it allows the developer some flexibility in getting more than one house started at a time and getting them through the process, sold, and then those fees collected. I'd be happy to answer any questions and as Jill had mentioned, Mr. Carrie Pope is here as well and so, thank you.
Thank you. One of the, not a question, a comment. And I'm open up to the public after we make comments. One of the benefits of this is allow a well-regulated cash flow, which is required for quality development. And I think that although we're doing it for this only, we should have some type of a process that we do this type of delay, but still receive the payment for other developments. Some developments will have additional fees. Some may have to have a, what is it, the Swainson-Hock fee of $14,000 per acre as well as a $10,000 acre for ag mitigation fees. So these are items that, they're not upfront, but they're before your plans are approved. So these are costs that can help the developer still maintain a quality development. And that's what we're looking for in this city. Are there any questions or comments before I bring it up to the public?
I have just one. Approximately how, what's your timeline for completion on the project?
I assume you're talking to me?
Yes, Mr. Pope.
Yes, Mr. Pope. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Carrie Pope, 3237 Riverside Drive here in Riverbank. I'm not directly related to the construction process, so I'm not exactly sure, so I can't speak exactly to that. But in talking with Mr. Wilber, it's my understanding that he wants to be, at least through this particular phase, within 18 months.
Okay, thank you.
In addition, I just wanted to add that, you know, it's become, I can remember as a kid and going down with my dad, we grew up in Turlock and he was a builder and did some building there. We used to be able to go down and, you know, buy a couple of permits for houses that he was building for, you know, a thousand dollars or less. And so it was quite easy to be able to start some of those and do that. The fees have gotten, you know, much higher over the years and it's much more difficult to be able to make that happen and to be able to get projects started. It's my understanding that Mr. Wilber is going to be trying to build affordable housing within the FHA ranges for working class folks, you know, very nice homes, but yet affordable. And every advantage needs to be taken to be able to allow him to do that. These impacts won't be felt on these fees until after they're occupied, so I think it's a prudent process. So I'll answer any questions that you may have of me.
Do we have an anticipated number of units?
This first phase is 58 units, yes.
When you were growing up and I was growing up, a home could be bought for $20,000, not $250,000.
This is true.
So it's probably comparable.
Yes, this is true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Yes, ma'am. Sure.
Okay, am I understanding this right, that it's 37,000 something per dwelling? So 58 times that is you're going to be deferring like, what is it, $480,000?
No, ma'am, it's 20, about $25,000 per unit that will be deferred until such time as the-
You're not deferring all the fees?
Pardon me?
Not deferring all the fees then?
No, they have to pay initially $10,700 initially. And then after final inspection, which will happen like every eight weeks, they'll have a final inspection, they have to pay the remainder.
So it's like 58 times 25,000?
Yes, but that'll be paid, that fee will be paid, not at the end of the project, but as the housings are completed.
And what happens, if something happens and it doesn't go through and you've got it deferred, then what happens?
Then we own the property and the house.
That's what you needed. The other question I have is, on the third page of your staff report, it says that this current system development fee program does not provide an administrative process to consider the deferral or waiver of fees under negotiations for free reductions at any level, including administrative and/or City Council. So since you don't have any process or anything in your code now to do that, are you doing this based on what you just passed on your new system development fees and the item or several, because you don't have anything in there to allow you to do it now?
That being the case, it then just rolls to the City Council.
But we're doing that now.
Yes, if I might, the item that John Anderson just brought forward does have a section of the deferral of system development fees shall be approved by the City Council and it shall include the requirement for a deposit, payment of an administrative expense, which I mentioned was $100, and also a payment of a reasonable rate of interest for the portion of the fee which is deferred. So this is all new language in the new item.
We're not done with public comment, let's continue with public comment, please. Any further public comment? Now I bring it back to the dais.
I just kind of tie that together. Since there isn't a process in place, it automatically goes to the City Council and then what we've decided to do is apply the principles from the item you just approved.
But that's not yet approved.
To be approved, yeah.
When there's not a specified process, the default is you bring it to the City Council for action and that's how we've handled a couple of these matters over the course of the last few years. They've all been agendized, they've been discussed in public, there've been written staff reports, written recommendations, and the City Council's taken action. So just because there's not, when there's not something specified in the code, we bring it back to the City Council for clarification. And now we're just documenting the process that we've used several times, so it's clear.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Then I ask the council for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept item 6.1.
I'll second.
We have a motion to accept item 6.1, to approve item 6.1 in a second.
Council members Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, River Access Review.
Yes, Mayor members of the City Council, earlier this year in our last strategic planning session as we approached summer, we knew that River Cove would be an area of concern. Over the last several years, staff has been working very closely with the River Cove community to manage impacts created by the increased interest in enjoying our outdoor areas. And so that staff includes public works, recreation, the Sheriff's Department, et cetera. Sue is providing an update this evening for your consideration on what happened this last summer and some general recommendations and consideration. We anticipate that you may want us to come back with some additional information and more specific recommendations. We did not notice this as a public, like a public input opportunity. This is really a presentation for the City Council and we are taking direction on how you'd like us to proceed and providing some recommendations on what we see might be valuable. So at this time, I'd like Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, to provide her summary of what happened this last summer.
Mayor members of the council, we did look at some options prior to the summer season this year and what we wanted to do is give you an update on how the summer went and then kind of reintroduce some of those options that we've refined a little bit. You also had asked us to do a survey of the neighborhood to see how the subdivision residents felt about some of the options that we had discussed. So I will present those results of that survey as well. Just as a quick kind of review, this is the map of River Cove and where the highlighted area is the River Access area, the city property. So you can see the River Cove subdivision there that's affected especially the people right across the street from the highlighted area and that's River Cove Drive. So as we talk, where's the pointer here? As we talk about some of the options, just to kind of get an idea of where it is on the map, the main access point that we were dealing with is a beach area that has a kind of a nice little slope down and a nice beach, even a larger beach now since the water is so low. We pretty much had that area under control for the most part this year. There were some other problems we had with a few other accesses, but especially, we're going to be talking about Briar Cliff, which is down at the end of this highlighted area. Actually, the highlighted area should go a little bit further to the end there. And Briar Cliff has an emergency pump owned by the city right on the street side, but then there's a slope that goes down and there's a storm outfall. And that area is very steep and someone can fall into the pit very easily. It's a hazard there. So this is an area that became probably more so this summer than ever, a main access point for people to go down onto city property, but then cross over to Army Corps property, all this is Army Corps property here. And to the west is private property on our side, on this side of the river. And those were the main problem areas this year. So we had our areas somewhat under control as far as garbage, litter, we had our patrols there, had that pretty much under control, but this area, once people crossed over to the Army Corps property and down to the west, it's area we had no authority over and even because of the terrain, we couldn't get to. So that was predominantly the problems this summer. So just kind of keep that matter in mind, I'll come back to this map as we go along. So overall the-
Quick question real quick.
Sure.
Because of that particular area, was it more so this year because of the low water? So it hasn't been in the past?
Probably because it was easy for people to cross over in droves onto the Army Corps from that point and also to get downriver. I think people were even sitting in lawn chairs in the river as people were swinging from the rope swing on private property. So I would say, yeah, a lot of the problems are from the lower river. So overall, just over the years, the concerns have been garbage, just a lot of people, just litter, garbage, excessive traffic, parking, especially on River Cove Drive, speeding vehicles, street racing, trespassing on properties. People actually go and use the residents' hoses that live across the street and hose off their stuff. Underage drinking, partying, recreational drug use deals, vandalism, public urination, open fires and theft. So those are just kind of the list of things that have been dealt with over the years. We did the survey, we sent someone out, a city employee out, a parks employee, and hand-delivered the surveys and actually, a lot of them were given back at the time the survey was done, some were mailed back. So out of 178, that was the whole entire subdivision, 38 were returned. And I just noticed earlier today when I was looking at the map that there are 38, about 38 houses that are on River Cove Drive. So those are the people who are most concerned. Not that the other people aren't, but those are the most concerned and those were the ones that came back. Some people chose, when we did the survey, some people chose more than one option, they circled a couple of them and combined some options. But these are some of the options we presented to council right before summer and these are the responses. So option one was to make that whole highlighted area a no trespassing zone. Nine people were for that, their vote was for that option. Option number two was no trespassing zone with a fence and if you remember, we had talked about fencing and how expensive that would be. Four people were in favor of that. Option number three was parking by permit only, which we would have to do not only on River Cove Drive, but within the side streets because otherwise the cars would just be pushed further into the subdivision. 13 people liked that idea. Option number four is fence River Access at Briar Cliff, which would just fence that main point of access that is becoming the problem and also a safety issue. We give that as an option and four people felt that was the best option. Option number five was just to continue current patrols and city garbage pickup. They felt it did make a difference, what we did this past summer, and that we should just continue that. Six people felt that would be the best thing to do. Some thought continuing option five with other options, a combination of one through four, would be best. 11 people responded with that. Make River Cove a gated community, eight of the responses wanted that to happen. And as we had talked about when we looked at our options, whatever decision we make is going to affect the entire subdivision. So this last one objected to option number one. There were seven people that strongly objected to making it a no trespassing zone and that they moved there for the River Access and they really did not want to have that taken away.
At these options, I've spoken to a lot of the residents recently after they submitted the survey. They didn't understand what the no trespassing was. My opinion, and I'm talking with the residences, that they would be the one who would be monitoring who would be going down or using the access to the river. For example, they'd call in, probably people that they don't know that are parked down there and trespassing is a violation that can be cited. While they're off-season, they would still monitor it and they would call who, you know, somebody they don't know. know, somebody they don't know, but for most part, they would still maintain some type of control to the river.
Okay.
And they seem to understand that. If you just say, "No trespassing," well, I want to go down there. I don't know who's going to call you in in the off-season, who you're going to call during the season. So, it's up to the residents to call in one way or the other, and it's by sight that you can cite people if you physically see them trespassing. However, on the riverside, you cannot, you cannot restrict them from the beach access if that beach access is part of the tidal system in the higher, high water is where your demarcation point is, and that you, anything below that, we can't restrict their access from the other side of the river.
Correct. I think the chief's, and my input on that would be, and he can speak on that too, is if we were to say no trespassing, it would need to be across the board, and you can't, I don't know that we can pick and choose.
Yeah, we can't, you do for one, you do for all. So, if you make it no trespassing, obviously, the law is going to apply equally to everyone. And that's the only way.
I'm fully aware of that, but you're not going to go down there for no trespassing if you haven't had a report in.
Well, if the city decides to propose it no trespassing, then I have to be concerned about a deputy picking and choosing. If they decide they wanted to go down there and patrol it, and they took a walk down there, and somebody happened to be there, then-
They would have to do their duty.
It puts the Sheriff's Department in a dilemma, because they may opt to enforce it, and then they have to decide whether that, it's too discriminatory.
I'm not asking the Sheriff's Department or the Riverbank Police Services to deviate from what their duties are.
Right. It creates a legal dilemma, and maybe the city attorney can elaborate on it if he cares to, but it, to me, you have to universally apply it. And I understand, I understand what you're saying, that it's a seasonal problem. I agree entirely, but the law is going to be in place throughout the year regardless of season.
I understand.
So, to try to approach it from another standpoint, I think is, there's some follies there.
Mayor and council, may I suggest that we continue with the presentation, and then we can focus on sort of the pros and cons of the different options a little bit later once we kind of get an overview of sort of what the situation has been this summer? Because I think this is going to be, this has been an interesting discussion in the past. There's no perfect solution, and so, I think that we're, if we can kind of speak to the, if we can speak to each of the specific options at a little bit later time, that might be useful. So, if there's no objections, have Sue go continue on with the presentation if that's council's direction.
Just to go on about the survey, just some of the resident statements that you might be interested in. Our patrols are needed more frequently and on foot, concerns about levee erosion, issues citations, and parking tickets for violators and have unauthorized vehicles towed. When calling the Sheriff's Department, dispatchers are rude, not understanding the purpose of their calls was, a few of them had said that happened. Problems began when the city began charging entrance fee at Jacob Myers Park. Homeowners could pay an annual fees for a gated community. And those were just some additional comments that were on the survey.
I would like to make one comment in terms of the, there's some misunderstanding that these problems began when the city started issuing a parking citation, and the numbers, excuse me, the parking, excuse me, the parking fee at Jacob Myers Park, and the numbers just don't bear that out, and the, when individuals are spoken to about like what the history has been, the mayor actually communicated that, you know, when he's been speaking to people, that they recognized this started long before the fee was established. So, while that's a comment, that's a misconception out there, the facts just don't back up that perception.
Right. My view on that is, is it hit at the same time, we started charging a parking fee right when everything started to increase as far as river activity, and that's been shown all the way from Knights Ferry to McHenry Park, that just everyone's closing to capacity, and it's been a growing, a growing trend every summer, which we're busier and busier. The sheriff report, River Cove area, the chief gave us some statistics just that they gathered over the May through September period of time, and the total Riverbank Police Services calls from the River Cove area was 171, and the related to River Cove, River Access was about 123 with 52 citations given. So, that is an increase, and that might just partly be because of the increased attention to that area, and, you know, we were encouraging people to call if they had seen any suspicious activity. Ontel Security was our private security. They went out there, a total of 97 scheduled visits. Typical issues that they reported, they gave me a report every Monday morning, and I forwarded it to the chief. Suspicious persons, suspicious vehicles, city ordinance violation, drunk in public, or as they were driving by, they were flagged down to deal with, you know, alcohol or some related situation. Observations in their reports were that most of the issues, like I mentioned, were on the property to the west and across the river, Army Corps property, which they didn't have authority over. Parking along River Cove at Briar Cliff to private property to the west and Army Corps property across the river. Trash present, intoxicated people, people on resident property using their water hoses, and multiple people speeding. So, again, the map, just the main area of concern this year was right here and to the Overall, just the positive outcomes, increasing Sheriff's Department and private security did make a difference, and that was noted on the surveys. Increased garbage pickup made a difference. Normal access point was under control over last summer, and that's that beach area that is, was our main concern before. The challenges, increased access at Briar Cliff, people accessing private property for the rope swing, parties, drinking, littering. I know there was an injury, a major injury on the rope swing. Increase in homeless. And to clarify that, you know, we did have a homeless camp towards the beginning of summer, and it, when we went down there, because we had a complaint, we responded to the emails right away, and it was actually on the railroad property, which was east. And we still cleaned it up. Sheriff's and city staff met and cleaned that area up. But most of the people are upriver, the homeless situation. The ones that seem to be in the River Cove area, from what I've heard, stay at night and then leave in the morning. So, anything other than that, we were addressing, but it wasn't the huge issue that is more so upriver. Summary of options, and this is kind of a review from last summer, which refined a little bit, and we got our costs together. Option number one was the no trespassing along the River Access, along River Cove Drive, and that would just be posting the signs. That's $1,600. Option two, no trespassing and fence along River Cove Drive, that was the more costly one, because the fence would have to be high-quality, and there would be a lot of linear feet. So, that would be, you know, $71,000, but even with a more quality fence, it'd probably close to $100,000. Option number three, parking by permit only throughout the subdivision, $7,000, that would be for the signage. Option number four, fence access area at Briar Cliff, which would be making that area fenced off, so that that would address the safety issue that is an issue that we're concerned about. I know Development Services is concerned about. It would also make the access there, we wouldn't totally eliminate it, because if people really wanted to get around it, they could, but it would make it more difficult, a lot more Option number five, continue sheriff patrols, private security, and garbage pickup, and that would be $4,000, $5,000 annually. City staff recommendation, in just talking with everyone and looking at this, option four and five would be the best if we could fence the area at Briar Cliff, since there is a safety issue, and also the protection of our storm outfall would be the best, and then continue what we're doing also with the private security, sheriff patrols, garbage pickup. That would still have to continue. If funding does not allow, then at least continue with number five. Any questions?
I have one too. If I may, I've been in contact up and on during the summer with the residents down there, and my general impression, correct me if I'm wrong, is that things seem to have been a little better this year than they were last year.
Correct. In the area that we were monitoring.
Right.
Everything was pushed to an area where we really couldn't address the concerns. I know we had some people, even from River Heights now, it was down, their property down below, or not their property, but that area, which, that's an area that we just don't have control over.
And at the last meeting that I attended in June with the River Cove Association, there was a lot of talk about the responsibility, and they were very, very good, the River Cove residents that were there, about that understanding that they have a responsibility to help make everything work by reporting things, and, you know, trying to stay up on top of it, just like a neighborhood watch program as much as they possibly can. I think that they've done a better job this year, and that's helped out, you know, with the whole situation with the areas, as well as what you've done, patrolling it and whatnot. And I want to applaud them for having the ability to recognize that it's not just our responsibility, they need to be in there with us to make this work.
Right. And I know the sheriffs really were on top of things out there too, as much as they possibly could be.
And I want to thank the sheriff for bringing Nextdoor.com, because it is very active in the River Cove area. So, thank you for that.
Any public comment?
Thank you for that report. She's right, that yellow line should have gone down a little bit further. Once the city started to monitor the beach area, people went down to the very far end, and that's right by my house. And I can tell you, I've been living there 15 years, and there's a dramatic increase in the amount of people who've been going down there and parking over there. I can look out my bedroom window, I've seen people urinating right there, they litter right there, they've broken into one of my vehicles. I've actually had several city employees in my yard, and I showed them where the people party across the street, across the river, I mean, on the beach. They sit out there all day long until it starts to get dark, smoking marijuana, drinking, and it's a perfect place for them to party. It's on San Joaquin County's side. They'll park their vehicles over here, they'll cross the river, and the only way San Joaquin can get there, the police, would be on horseback. So, maybe you can talk with them and have them take a patrol back there once in a while during the summer. Your expense for the fence is outrageous, $71,000. I think that the, if we would only make that a gated community, you could save not only that $71,000 for the fencing and the $7,000 for the parking only, you could, you could also save the $4,000 to $5,000 annually for trash pickup, because those people would not be going down there anymore. It would only be the local residents, and there wouldn't be that issue. I think the residents need to get together and vote on this, and honestly, I think that's the best solution. And I don't know how much money it would cost, but if everybody had to pay an extra $10 a month, I think it's worth it. We already have a parks and lighting fee, I think it's only like $15 a month. Add $10 to it, we got a gated community, property values go up. When the people sell their home, the city gets more money from property taxes. It's a win-win for everybody. Something to consider.
Any further comments? Bring it back. This is a, oh, I'm sorry.
My name's Heidi Furtig, and I live on River Cove, and I think one of the biggest issues is the people coming down with their alcohol and spending, spending all day there, drinking, and then getting in their car and leaving our neighborhood. Whereas I have three small children, I'm very concerned about their livelihood, playing, you know, in my front yard even with, last night, there was people tearing up and down. I think they went around the entire subdivision three times just as fast as they could. My husband called it in, but, I mean, I don't know if they were caught before they headed on out, but gated community, I think that's, you know, a good idea. I don't know how doable that is, but me and my husband feel that the permitted parking at least would kind of give us more control over when we call in, because we call in all the time, you know, we see underage kids going down with huge cases of beer. Well, we know the police are very busy, and sometimes they can make it out there, and when they do, they're amazing. And a lot of the times, and by the time they get in the river, we know then, they have no control, they can't do anything, their hands are tied, you know? So, having a little more freedom on, maybe if it's permitted, they come, take their beer, they go and sit. Well, no, you can't cite them there, but you could, you could tow their car if they don't have a permit to park there. I know a lot of people have concern about, well, if my family comes and visits and they're parked here, they don't have a permit, how would that work? I'm sure there's ways to kind of, you know, fix that, or, you know, printable permits, I don't know. But, I know, one thing was someone said to, I don't know if it was on the survey that we turned in, but painting the curb red all down River Cove, and that would be a huge issue for me, because sometimes I do have family come over, and between my cars and my neighbors' cars, there's nowhere to park on our side of the street. So, they do park on the side where the levee is, you know, then they wouldn't be able to park there. And also, when people do come to use the river, then they would be parking on our side, keeping us from parking at our homes, or just going down the other surface streets, just, you know, it's, I don't know. It seems like there's got to be a good, a good solution here to keep our neighborhood safe, our children safe, and, I don't know, keep everybody happy. But I will say that over this summer, it's been so much better than last summer with, I see the sheriffs and Ontel and response when they can come, when we do call in, has been better. So, that's, that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Keith Lindgren. I live on 2724 River Cove. I'm right, right, right in the heart of that, you know, I'm a couple houses down from Prestwick, and they're directly across the street from one of the trails. And this is my first summer here, and, you know, I just want to say, I think the Sheriff's Department and the city employees did a great job. Every morning, there's someone out there picking up the trash, you know? See the sheriffs there all the time. I think the speeding is an issue, but a lot of that, honestly, I believe is residents in there too, you know? And just like Heidi said, I have three small children too that are, you know, and I don't even want them out close to the street because of that, you know? I don't know how feasible, I don't know how feasible making it a gated community is, but, I mean, that's the best option I see here. I definitely don't want access blocked off to it. That's the whole reason I moved here, you know? You take that away, then I just have a house that I paid a lot, too much for, you know? And $70,000 for fencing, I know, I certainly don't want to sit out on my front porch and see a chain-linked fence across the street, because I love the view I have right now. And, you know, the only other thing I can say is, is I agree with the city staff recommendations of four or five, you know, continue the patrols and everything, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Bring it back. For the legal, a gated community would have a lot of implications, plus you still can't deny access to the river. So, you don't accomplish anything with a gated community except for increased fees. How about a parking permit by permit only?
Do that.
They could still drop off?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll just weigh in here. I've been rather vocal about the whole River Cove issue, and I think you all know where I stand. I am a big proponent of the seasonal permitted parking, and in talking with many of the residents down there, that seemed to be at least something that they were interested in doing. Seasonal, not something that lasts all year round, but definitely seasonal during the height of the issues going on. So, I just wanted to restate that again, that I am still in favor of permitted parking down there. Not fencing anything off.
We're not making the decision tonight, but guidance.
I don't know.
So, continue, from my opinion, continue looking at options four and five and exact costing of the fence near- costing of the fence near Briar Cliff on the city property. If we have, how many people want to permit parking? But, you know, take a look at that.
Thirteen.
It was the largest number on the...
Yeah. It was thirteen.
Yeah, but if you combine number one and two, you hit thirteen also, which is no trespassing. But that's out. Because if we're not going to allow the residents' access, then that's not the option.
Could we...
My concern is that with continued use, though, they're still digging into the levee, and if we're going to have high water this year, that could erode that levee to where there's going to be a tremendous burden on the residents of River Cove to repair that levee. So I don't want to see that happen. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to say that in regards to the speeding, maybe we could take our mobile sign down there and post it sometimes, you know, just to kind of let people see how fast they're going.
I agree with the gentleman's, it could be from the residents because they're in my neighborhood too. I know this one individual that loves doing donuts and peeling out and racing around the neighborhood. A lot of times when they're coming out, yes, they might do it, but a lot of times you'll see that happen early morning prior to going to work or after work.
Regarding the speeding issue, has anyone talked about maybe doing speed bumps? Is that a consideration?
You'd have problems with fire and police.
I know that was looked at early on, and I don't think that was a feasible solution back then when we looked at it.
We did that in a neighborhood I lived at previously in Modesto years ago, and it was, because we all had young children, and it was very successful. And it didn't seem to impede fire or police too much, so, just a thought.
I agree with option four and five. I think that I'm glad to see that it did work and it did make a difference, so I think we should still continue with that if we are able to. And as far as the parking permit, if we made it seasonal, then if you, maybe we could give out some kind of special passes or something for families when they have...
Communities do it all the time. We're not the only one that has river issues and access to beaches and all that kind of stuff. And at several of the conferences, I got a chance to talk to some folks that lived in those communities that had permitted parking, and it wasn't an issue. They do seasonal permitted parking too. So, in the off-season, there's no permit, you just park wherever you want, but during the height of the season, and you have guest passes, you give your guests, and you collect them at the end, and all's good to go, so.
I think I also like the options three and five, and I do like the idea of seasonal permitted parking rather than all year round permitted parking.
Likewise, I can't support permitted parking because a river is different than a beach. You can't come from the ocean very often on the other side. But the river, because of its nature and the laws that control it with the riparian rights, is a different situation. They can come from the other side, and with the river being low, it can be, and in the long run, I don't think it would be that effective because as the mayor mentioned, they'll drop off and then go park somewhere else anyway.
They still have to have a permit in the entire neighborhood, so no one's going to be walking from Clearup, you know, over by El Ranchito and Patterson to go down to the river.
But they will from Zerillo Park. You going to restrict the park?
I'm not saying I have all the answers, but I'm saying it's one option that I'm in favor for. And I think that there's a lot of ifs and ands, and we can go on and on all night, but I'm going to tell you again, I'm for seasonal parking, I'm not for fencing at all.
And that's our input. We have seasonal parking and what you're doing, and we'll probably address it again next year at the, prior to the next full season. I assume that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I think if we were going to, I know Michael might have something to say about the fencing at Briar Cliff because there is a real issue there. We probably would bring it back at mid-year as a cost request because we would need to be able to do that before May. And then if that would be something that council would like, we could bring it, that along with the parking by permit up again, and then see what the costs are and what our financial situation is, and see if that's something that you feel we should do.
At this point, I think that the recommendation from the staff is that we do the fencing at Briar Cliff to address the safety issues, the liability issues, and the general access right there. In addition to that, that's sort of, that's one issue, we'd be requesting funding for that. We will look at continuing the private patrols, I think that's something that we need to continue to do as well. It is a budget issue and it's an impact. In terms of the permit parking, I think that we need to do some additional work, bring a proposal to you, and it will probably have a fee associated with that permit. We'll probably need, because that is an impact too, it's a staffing impact, it's also, you know, the cost of doing that, so most likely that's going to be passed on to the residents involved there.
Or all the other fees too.
Yeah, so, I think that, but we, you know, at this point, I think we have enough direction to be able to move forward and come back at the beginning, probably early to late winter to be prepared for 2016.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Item 6.3, resolution of the City of Riverbank, California approving the Oakdale Riverbank Corridor Area Agreement.
Mayor members of the city council, Donna Kenny is going to be presenting an overview of an Oakdale Riverbank corridor agreement to preserve green space between the two communities. This is a request to continue the agreement with the City of Oakdale.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening again. As Jill mentioned, this involves the City of Oakdale and Riverbank. A little bit of background, in 2001, the cities, along with Stanislaus County, agreed to maintain a community separator or corridor between Oakdale and Riverbank with the goal of preserving the individual identity of each community. The area is bounded by the western edge of the Oakdale sphere of influence and the eastern edge of the Riverbank sphere of influence, bounded on the north by Stanislaus River and on the south by the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. And here is a map of that area. On November 17, 2010, staff met with representatives from the City of Oakdale and Stanislaus County. All agencies expressed their support in extending the agreement for an additional 10 years. The city attorney has determined that this agreement is consistent with the general plan and its map. And staff recommends the approval of the agreement with an expiration date of 2021 to fulfill the agreement between Oakdale and Riverbank. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Anyone from the public wish to make comments? Are we making comments? This is a business meeting, sir. Seeing no public comment. Let's have a motion.
Make a motion that we approve item 6.3.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve in a second on item 6.3.
Council members Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Can you gentlemen go outside with your conversation, please? Thank you. Item, LRA item 6.4, Local Redevelopment Authority LRA Budget Report Fiscal Year and 2014-2015.
Yes, Mayor members of the city council, Melissa Holdaway, our management analyst, is going to be presenting the overview of the budget for the Riverbank Industrial Complex. Debbie Olson, the executive director of the LRA, is also available to address any questions during the course of the presentation. Melissa?
Good evening, Chair and Board members. I bring forth the year-end budget for 14 and 15. In your staff report, you did have a more detailed budget, so this is just going over some highlighted items of the budget for the year. Our budget framework for 14-15 consisted of three funds. Fund 197 was leasehold revenue, which consists of rents, utilities, O&amp;M, and miscellaneous revenue that comes in. Fund 198 was the Office of Economic Adjustment Grant, that provides funding for our salaries, administrative costs, and contractual services. And then Fund 199 was our environmental services cooperative agreement, our ESCA number one, that funds, funding specific to environmental cleanup of the site. The highlights for this year was increased rent revenue and one-time increase in miscellaneous revenue that was due to a settlement that came through at year-end. Fund 198, we were under budget by $700, so we will be disencumbering that and sending it back to the Office of Economic Adjustment. Fund 199, our project came in under budget, leaving us an additional revenue on hand of $316,000. That was a savings that we had from the contracts that were in place at the time the ESCA was initially funded, so. The major capital outlay, we did have an MVA transformer that came, that is currently not running, but is expected to once we get the approvals through the Hetch-Echi. I think Hetch-Echi is the one that is currently holding that up, but it should be coming through in November, I believe. But it is complete and ready to go. We do have a five-year fire suppression inspection deficiencies that came through, and that was asked for at mid-year, the $70,000 additional cost to get those in compliance. We did have an ED Bank debt service that was due at the end of December of last year, and that paid off the ED Bank loan that was for the specific plan on the site. Our revenue and expenditures, our cash receipts were over our expenditures for the year, so we did have a cash balance of $193,000. We added that to our ending balance, which is basically our reserve, and that is for our future grant match to cover the expenses for the roofs and siding that need to be replaced once ESCA number two is complete, leaving us an ending balance of $915,000. Our revenues, that year-end revenues surpassed our projections, and that was due to an increase in our rent revenues and then our settlement that came through that we were hoping to have, and it actually did take place. So, the expenditures, we did have some cost overruns, but they were absorbed by the additional revenue that we did receive, including that $316,000 that was left from the ESCA number one. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
I only have for the current year, I have nothing on this past year. Just on this current year, have we had any word on OEA grant? Are we going to have any?
We do have the OEA grant, it was accepted, so we do have that funding in place now for this year.
Okay, that's great. And ESCA two is already being executed? I didn't, not yet?
It's not yet, no. It's close, but not yet.
Okay, all right. I thought you mentioned ESCA two.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's the siding and roof replacement that's coming after they take it off, yeah. And that's going to be a three-year project from what I'm being told, so it's going to be a very long project for us.
Are there any questions, comments on item 6.4? Any comments or questions from, on item, LRA item 6.4? Seeing none, bring it back to the council for recommendation.
I'll make a motion, we approve item 6.4.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve item 6.4 in a second.
Authority members Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.5, Parks and Recreation Department Strategic Plan Update.
Mayor members of the city council, as I noted earlier tonight, there are a number of items that Sue Fitzpatrick is going to be providing a report on, and the time for that has come. And so Sue is going to be providing an overview of a number of, basically the results of a lot of research done over the course of the last several months.
Mayor members of the council, so at the March 31 strategic planning session, we did, my department was given five objectives to accomplish and then to report back to council, which I'm going to do tonight. We did accomplish all five objectives, and the objectives we were given all fell under the goal to improve and maintain infrastructure and facilities. So the first two were recommend a consultant to prepare a conceptual design and cost estimate for the Phase Two and Three for the sports complex and Phase Two and Three of Jacob Myers Park. And for the sports complex, Phase Two and Three are the additional parking, additional soccer field, possibly an indoor soccer field, or it could be an indoor/outdoor, just to kind of explore those things, baseball field, BMX park. Those were what we wanted to do in the Phase Two and Three of that development. For Jacob Myers Park, the Phase Two and Three included additional parking, amphitheater, and a bike pedestrian trail, and that would assume that if we were able to lease the Army Corps property. The progress on that is, we did do a request for qualifications, and we sent that out to landscape architects. We had four firms respond, and we had an interview panel of city staff, and we did the interviews, and we selected our M Design Group for both projects. They were very impressive, their presentations were good, they had some very creative ways of developing the parks, and especially some of the ideas that we were looking at. What we really want to do when we develop those two areas is have something unique and different, and this group really had some good ideas. So, currently, we're negotiating the cost with this group, and we'll present this at mid-year budget or when we are asked to. I did get the first figure, it was $68,000 for the sports complex design and cost estimate, and I think it was $64,000 for Jacob Myers Park. I am working with them to negotiate that down, and I did get it down to $50,000 so far, but I have some ideas to work on that, and I want to work with Donna Kenny and John Anderson on some other ideas as well. So, we'll be working on that. The funding source for those two projects would need to be system development fees and grants and fundraising. And I know the grants, the tools I need, I need some match funding, and I also need the conceptual design and cost estimate, and that gives us the power that we need for a quality grant. I think we can do some fundraising, we had to do that for the skate park and the teen center, and we did it. I believe that we can combine some of those things to make that happen. But that's kind of where we're at. I do kind of feel like I'm spinning my wheels because the end result is we don't have the money, but hopefully at least we will know what we need to, what we need to come up with. Objective number three was identify funding for a Parks and Recreation Master Plan and Needs Assessment. Again, that was included in the request for qualifications. That firm that we selected was Verde Design, and that is the same group, they were also actually called the Bills Group before, they had done the original master plan for Jacob Myers Park and the sports complex and Silver Park. So we have worked with this group before. I had estimated the cost would be $100,000. I did get that cost estimate today, and it was $108,000. What Jill had mentioned earlier is that maybe we could phase that in because the funding source again would be future system development fees, because that's under the new housing construction. This would not include KB Homes as they are under the old fee structure. Possibly Cal Fire Grant. I have heard that they have funded four park master plans, but when I've called the cities, I haven't had that verified yet, I'm still working on some of the research on that. And then general fund. So, what Jill had mentioned is phasing that in, like, for example, maybe part of a park master plan and needs assessment is assessing what you have, assessing the facilities and parks you have. Maybe that could be Phase One. Maybe that could be Phase One in order to establish need, then maybe Phase Two could be the survey, the community survey and the community meetings, and then maybe Phase Three would be the map and, and actually the report and finishing the process. So we'll be looking at, and how that can all work. We may have to wait till more development comes in to actually finish this project.
Another thing, too, is to really focus on those deliverables that we need to be able to go out and apply for grants. And Sue has a good sense of what we might need for that, and I think for all of these is that's probably our, our first Phase One, is identifying what do we need to be able to go out there and ask for money, and then, and then build from, from that point forward.
The last two objectives, four and five, is research financing options for the pool locker room renovation. And if you remember, at the prior year strategic planning, it was to get a conceptual design and cost estimate for the pool locker room renovation, as well as the community center renovation, and we had finished that process, and that's how we have these numbers. So it was $256,000 for the pool locker room renovation, and then for the community center renovation, it was $525,000. So we already had those numbers. The progress on that is we integrated the ADA Transition Plan numbers into the renovations because we had to make sure that any renovation is going to take care of all of those, those items that were identified. So we did that. We attended, Donna Kinney and I attended the Infrastructure Funding Fair in Sacramento and looked at some of the loans they have available, CDBG funding, the representatives were there, we actually were able to talk to them, and there's another Parks-related housing grant that we will probably be eligible for. So we got the research on that. What we found out from some of that research is the pool locker rooms are not eligible for CDBG funding. We were hoping they would be, but they don't meet the criteria. No payback ability from revenue, so it's not eligible for most loans. A lot of them are based on payback ability, and we don't have a real revenue source for that. General fund would be the, one of the funding sources, grants or fundraising is what we're looking at for the pool locker rooms. The community center reservations, there was a little bit better news, that most likely we are eligible for CDBG funding, and that's because of the nature of the use. The more senior programming, low-income programming that we have there, the senior food program is really going to help us. So that is something that we can apply for. There's a workshop in January, and then the application process begins. City would benefit from completing a new income study, we found out, and I know Marcella and other staff and I have talked about that, because you have to reach, be at a 51% low-income level, or, or whatever that might be, and, and we're at a 35%, at least on the figures that are on the books now. So we want to relook at that if we can. There is a housing-related park grant available in the fall, so we'll be looking into that. That looks promising. Again, general fund and fundraisers is what we'll need to do to make, make that renovation of the community center happen. Questions that you might have?
I just wondered if you could clarify the housing-related, if you go back one slide.
The housing-related parks grant?
That one.
That one is based on the low-income housing permits. Marcella, can, do you, is it based on how many low-income housing permits you've done? So we were, I think our numbers are good. Is that, they, they weren't quite where we were hoping they'd be last time we looked at it, but from what, I was talking to Rose, I haven't talked to Marcella too much about it, but we were hoping maybe those numbers are where they need to be to qualify us, and that's something we have to look at, but it's based on that.
All right, thank you.
Can I make?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you go back to the slide for the estimated cost for Jacob Myers Park and the sports complex? I need to look at the numbers, please.
The estimated cost, I didn't, I didn't have that.
Oh.
Just said that verbally, and that was the, when I got the results just a couple weeks ago, and I'm still working on that. The original was $68,000 for the sports complex and $64,000 for Jacob Myers Park. I've gotten the sports complex down to $50,000 now, but I'm still working on lowering that. What I, what I would like to do is go to the architect and say, all I need is a tool, a visual, and a ballpark figure, if nothing else, and seeing if they could just give me that tool. Then what we could do is lump in the design to the grant and, and do it that way, but I'm, I'm going to work on some of those things, and, and I'm hoping Donna and John can help with some ideas, too, so.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to compliment Sue on all the hard work she's done in looking for grants and the time that she's put into this. I know she's talked with Heather Wright up in Knights Ferry, as I have done. Heather's the director for the Corps of Engineers in our area, and right now they have a very conservative approach to anything being developed on the river. They don't have any money to offer us at all, and they want guarantees that if a project like the bike trail is done, that you can't just come up with the money to build it, you got to show you've got the money to supervise it, manage it, maintain it, et cetera. I approached the Lower Stanislaus River Committee earlier in the summer about this as being made a regional project, and didn't really get too much feedback from them. This committee is composed of Riverbank, Oakdale, and Ripon, and a few other entities, and they're very busy with their own projects, but after the first of the year, I would like to revisit again and possibly see if we can't turn this into a regional project, because I think it would be an ideal regional project, you know, for a first project for this committee, if we can sell it to them. But I applaud everything you've done, Sue.
Thank you.
Any more input to Sue? Any input from the public? Seeing none? I believe you had the input. 7-1, staff comments?
Mayor, Members of the City Council, I'd like to start staff comments out tonight with Donna Kinney, who'll give an update on the property at Third and Atchison.
Good evening again. Well, I have some better news this time. During the week, the property owner was able to go into contract with the asbestos removal guy, who was able to complete the application to the, the Air District and get them to expedite the permit. He did receive the permit, and he came into City Hall last Thursday and pulled a permit for a hydrant meter, because they need water to, to work with this asbestos extraction. And both the property owner and the contractor were on-site today, removing asbestos. So once that is done, it's only going to be a day or two of actual work to remove the building, and I'll follow up on that and find out exactly when that's going to happen for you. Thank you.
And Mr. Michael Riddell to provide an update on our water use numbers for September.
Evening, Mayor, council members. So we've run the production numbers for September. We did reduce, we reduced by 27%. We also are now actively enforcing the two-day-a-week. The fire went out last week along with the schedule, and we have already had some residents contact us for help with changing their timers out. So that's kind of where we're at. Obviously, we still are not meeting the state mandate. We fell short again this last month.
Again, as I mentioned earlier, this is going to continue to be an issue that we have to deal with. It is, it's very difficult to meet the mandate that's been established, so we will, we will continue, and I think we all are praying for rain as well.
I think it's forecasted for the weekend.
Good, and better, better this coming weekend than last weekend. Which, I'll just go right into Cheese and Wine, and Sue has a variety of, of updates to give you on some very busy, busy October and November. And before she starts, I just would like to compliment the staff that was involved in the Cheese and Wine under Sue's leadership and direction, and a lot of work was put in by the staff, along with Chris Ricky, our event organizer, to put on an event. The volunteers, all of which, five are sitting here to my left, and the dais to volunteer for this event as well. We just could not do it without the support of the community groups and all the volunteers that, that contributed time, and of course, all of those who came out and participated. But I, I just would like to specifically acknowledge Sue, Anita, Tim, and the entire REC staff that, that put a lot of time and effort into this as well. So Sue, thank you.
Yeah, staff, staff did a really great job, and volunteers as well. Overall, I, I think the Cheese and Wine Festival went well. Operationally, it, it, I think it was successful in, in a lot of ways. Nothing's ever perfect, but I think we, we did pretty well. As far as financially, we'll know in the next three weeks, after everything settles, all the expenses and, and revenue is all settled, we'll probably come back and, and do a report in January like we did last year, and that way we can talk about what council's direction is for the future. If I had to guess, I think that this year we might have to, our goal is not to use that $5,000 that, that the city set for. We may have to use a little bit of it, maybe $1,500 of it. I don't know, that's my guess, maybe not, but that would be the worst. So we didn't make a lot of money, we didn't lose a lot of money. We're right in there where I think we're comfortable financially, but I'll have that for sure in about three weeks. Other than that, other reports, the country dance club that came and requested to use the community center building a couple times a month for the country dance club, did have their first dance Friday night, and they had 40 people there. They were a little disappointed, but there were a lot of things going on that night. They're hoping this next week to double that and have 80, but we are watching that, we are looking at, at, at how that's going, and I think that they are going to be successful and have the numbers that they would like. Other than that, the Hay Ride is coming up next weekend, October 23rd and 24th. Staff is doing a great job getting that all ready to go. I think it's going to be a successful event. And then right after that will be the Parade and Craft Show, which is slated for November 28th. So that's all I have.
Yeah, the November 28th, that is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and the Hay Ride, I believe the theme is scary movies, isn't it?
Right, this time it has to be a, a theme of a scary movie.
Yeah, so it should be very interesting. Also wanted to bring out, Sue, thank you again for all the work here. I wanted to bring to those who might be watching online, every city, every postal customer received a note about district election meetings. The first one of the second round of meetings is tomorrow night at 6:00 at the Riverbank Language Academy, which is on Stanislaus Street and Riverbank. So we're looking forward to seeing some people come out for that. That'll be the first of three. We also have, of course, the Strategic Planning Session on Thursday, and Thursday also happens to be the Great California Shakeout. This is emergency preparedness month, and we encourage everybody to take a look at their emergency preparedness plans. At the staff level, we participated in this in the past numerous times. We do fine with evacuation, so this year at the staff level, we're focusing in on looking at our, our working environment, and is it safe, what could fall, and be prepared for that. So bottom line, it's still drop cover and hold on in the event of an earthquake, and that's something we need to always be ready with. So that actually concludes staff comments for this evening, and do appreciate the council's efforts.
7-2, council authority member comments. Council member Jones Cruz?
I just have, just wanted to, real quick comments, and the California Shake is scheduled for 10:15. Will we be, will we be participating in our strategic plan?
Plan is no.
We've been talking about it a lot at school. Getting ready for that.
We'll schedule a break at that time.
We got a chance to attend the California League of Cities Conference, and it was very beneficial. There was a lot of things that all of us were able to take away from that, and I think we'll be sharing that in the near future. And I just wanted to thank the folks for their reports tonight. Thank you, Donna. It was the Donna Show tonight, and we appreciated it. Thank you. This was your night to shine, and you did, thank you.
Council member Campbell?
I was busy at the Cheese and Wine both days, working for various organizations, and I was impressed with how well it was organized and how well it went. I attended the wine, Cheese and Wine tasting briefly, just to sort of scope that out, and that was much better this year, and people seemed very contented. One other comment I want to make is in regards to Mr. Foley's comments earlier tonight. I met with Mr. Foley well over a year ago when this incident occurred, and we discussed it several times, and I finally just politely let him know that our city manager, who I support wholeheartedly, had followed the procedures of the city and the policies of the city in regards to the comments that he made, and that's why we have not done anything, because I know personally, I've talked with him, and I couldn't go any further because I did not see where we had done anything wrong.
Council member Tucker?
Appreciate it as well, the opportunity to go to the League of California Cities Annual Conference, great conference in San Jose this year. Every member of the council was there, as well as Maricela Garcia, our Chief Financial Officer, was able to go with us, and it was, it was nice. There were a lot of takeaways, there were a lot of good workshops that we were able to attend, and very good information to help us in a, in a variety of the aspects that we've been working on, and we'll be able to talk about on Thursday at our Strategic Planning Meeting, which I hope members of the public will attend, give you a great perspective on, on just what it is that we go through in, in developing our strategic plan, and one of the reasons why it is, why it enables us to be a unified and cohesive council, because we've already had our disagreements and have come to, to come, to some consensus, sorry, I can't talk anymore, in what, you know, the goals and the, and the things that we want to accomplish in the city. And I just wanted to thank Sue and compliment Parks and REC, all the departments, but especially Sue this evening, did an amazing job overseeing Cheese and Wine, an amazing job with all of the big events that we've got going on right now, all the things that go on during the summer and in the fall, and I know you're extremely busy, and we can't thank you enough. We really, truly appreciate all that you do, so thank you.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
I too enjoyed the California League of Cities Conference, and I think that one key takeaway for me was that in order for us to achieve the economic development, the city must be able to respond to the, the developers' needs. And I think that we, as a city, we have to have a clear roadmap and a council with a vision, and I think our city departments are well on the way to achieve our, one of our strategic goals, in that for us to be ready to expedite our services effectively, efficiently, and timely, and even though it may take years for us to actually, to see some of these projects to come to fruition, we still have to be ready, and I'd like to thank everyone for their hard efforts and, and hard work in leading us towards that direction. And I attended the dedication of the new Stanislaus County Sheriff's Coroner Facility, and just to let you know, the old facility no longer is, meaning it's, well, it has outgrown its capacity, so the new facility is very nice and new, and it's going to serve the community very well. And thank you, everyone, that participated in our Citywide Walk to School Day on October the 7th, and there were several events that were running concurrently throughout the city, and it was, the purpose was to highlight awareness and safety of our students. Excuse me. And I also attended the Expanding Your Horizons Workshop at UOP in Stockton, and the focus of the workshop was to motivate young women in science and mathematics, and it was a on-hands workshop regarding different projects. And just to let you know, excuse me, that we sponsored four students from the Riverbank community, and it was a very, very successful workshop. And again, you've heard it before, but thank you for all your efforts in all of our projects that we have going on in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
The California League of Cities Conference had a lot of topics going simultaneously, and we split up who was going to take what topic, and we have a lot of good information. Some of it is on water fund, water bonds available out there, grant writing. Some of it was financial, which we used yesterday in our financial review, and I found that it is most beneficial for this city to continue its presence, especially not only it is most beneficial for this city to continue its presence, especially not only in the conference, but in our, our community environmental and economic workshops that we attend three times a year. I'd like to congratulate again Sue, you and your staff on Cheese and Wine. I know it wasn't easy, and there was a lot of time that you put in, I'm sure you have that well documented, that we can discuss on Thursday. And although you heard that we met goals in our sphere of influence, there's still a lot of work left to do, the MSR, I believe that that's currently being conducted, and then annexation in areas that we need to do to protect the city when the North County Quarter finally gets drawn, which, if it's put out in November like it's, it's wanting to, within six months, you'll have the, the selection. So we have that window, which isn't very big. Again, I'd like to thank Maricela again for last night. That was superb. I thank you and the efforts that you did, as well as all the other personal and professional tasks that you're doing. So again, thank you. With that, I'm going to talk about Item 8, but we're not going to close session, but anyone who wishes to talk about the closed session may do so, which is Item 8.1, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation, and it is presented in 8.1. If there's anyone that'd like to talk about Item 8.1? Seeing none? Meeting's adjourned.